Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the twenty-second meeting of the Ramadi Di Vittala Commission. Going directly into the public hearing, calling agenda item number one, application number two-two dash two-four-five-seven-five from Waikiki La Guin Restaurant LLC DBA Kitchen Door Plaza Restaurant and Bar Kitchen Door Boardwalk Cafe. Mr. Ho.
Seize his greetings, Madam Chair and Commissioned Members. Kenneth who appearing for the applicant. Mr. Larry Castor was supposed to be here, but I'm unauthorized. Mr. Castor was present at the event, and you may have caught me in traffic.
Yes, we after this pandemic, we've all forgotten about traffic, including ourselves. All right, Ms. Hry.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioned Members. This application has received zero letters of support. Applicants had statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions or type of action for the applicant?
Motion to approve application number two-two dash two-four-five-seven-five.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve application number two-two dash two-four-five-seven-five. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote aye. Motion is carried. Application is approved. Thank you.
Thank you, with apologies. Thank you.
Same thing. Moving into the special license applications, calling agenda item number two, application number two-three dash zero-one-one-eight-six from Kohls &amp; Catering by Sinublan Catering. Mr. Alero.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Sam Alero, General Manager for Sinublan Catering.
This is for a birthday party on January sixth?
Yes, ma'am.
And you folks are doing well at the Philcom Center, yeah?
Yes, we're very, very fortunate, yes.
Very good, okay. Commissioner?
Motion to approve application number two-three dash zero-one-one-eight-six.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve application number two-three dash zero-one-one-eight-six. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote aye. Motion is carried. Application is approved. Calling agenda item number three, application number two-three dash zero-one-one-eight-seven from Kohls &amp; Catering by Sinublan, Sinublan Catering. Mr. Alero again, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Sam Alero, General Manager for Sinublan Catering.
And this is another birthday party on the seventh of January, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And I see that you have approximately two hundred people are gonna be at the event?
Yes, ma'am.
And you're expecting all two hundred?
No.
Okay, all right. And minors are usually in attendance, because it's usually like family, yeah?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number two-three dash zero-one-one-eight-seven.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve application number two-three dash zero-one-one-eight-seven. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote aye. Motion is carried. Application is approved. Thank you. Good luck. Happy holidays.
Yeah, thank you. Happy holidays. See you guys next year. Thank you.
Calling agenda item number four, applications number two-three dash zero-zero-two-seven-five dash one through two-three dash zero-zero-two-seven-five dash eight inclusive from Peg &amp; Eve LLC DBA Mojito Cafe. Mr. Nishiyoka.
Good afternoon, Chair, Members of the Commission. Greg Nishiyoka, Authorization of Befitting on behalf of the applicant. To my right is Evelyn E.V.E.L.Y.N. Beckwith E.E.C.K.W.I.T.H., who is a member manager. We have received and reviewed Investigator Sato's report. Do we have no changes there, too?
Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Just a comment. You saw the report regarding he as a member of the entity?
Miss Stross, yes.
Any comments on that?
Nothing for that. It appears that she has addressed, well, she's moved to, I believe, expand it from her record.
Okay. Okay, enough said. Thank you.
Only question I have is it says you're anticipating about a hundred people per day, correct?
Hopefully.
Okay. Motion to approve application number two-three dash zero-zero-two-seven-five dash one through two-three dash zero-zero-two-seven-five dash eight inclusive.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve applications number two-three dash zero-zero-two-seven-five dash one through two-three dash zero-zero-two-seven-five dash eight inclusive. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote aye. Motion is carried. Applications are approved.
Thank you very much. Happy holidays. See you all next year.
Happy holidays. Moving into requests, calling agenda item number five, request number two-two dash two-five-zero-six-zero from LP Butterfly LLC DBA Margaritas. Mr. Holmes.
Hi, Lawrence Ho, representing Margaritas.
And this is a request to permanently increase your license premises and to make alterations, correct?
Yes.
Approximately how big of an extension are you folks requesting?
I think it's in the report. I'm not sure exactly. The square footage, I would say it's more than fifty percent of our, of our current.
Okay. Write them down here, please. Where are you folks looking to expand into?
You're familiar with Eightaway Center?
Mm-hmm.
There's a, there's a lobby space. When you first park your car, you get into the lobby space. There was a bakery before there.
Okay.
So they vacated and were expanding our kitchen back that way.
Mm-hmm.
And so it'd be in that secluded private patio courtyard.
Okay, so you're expanding your kitchen. Are you folks gonna be offering more food menu items or hoping to expand that area of your business?
Yeah, so we're gonna have more seating there, too. So more patio seating in that courtyard.
Right, it's pretty small right now.
Yeah, yeah. Our kitchen was like a food truck before.
Right, right, okay, all right. And then I see that there is a access aisle and you folks are gonna have no alcohol allowed in that area?
That's correct. It's just walking back and forth.
Okay. Okay. All right, Commissioners, do you have any questions or type of action?
So that space you're gonna like add to your, where you have your lobby and area, so is that, that's fully enclosed or is that actually that space where it's like your parking lot area as well?
It would be enclosed with planter boxes, so there would be planter boxes that form a perimeter around the patio.
Okay.
And it's also a courtyard for, or a lobby space for the general center.
Right, and you're also looking to put tables, you said, out there?
Yes.
So you're gonna have somebody permanently stationed out there, right?
That's correct. When we are serving tables out there.
Because you have people handling stuff back and forth, right?
Yes.
If it's only planter boxes, right?
Right.
And then I also see that other space that was in the back, you're gonna have more table area, right?
Yes, yeah. Wherever there's space, we'll put tables.
Yeah. And with the increase in size, how many people are you looking to add on? I mean, best knowledge, I mean, because obviously you said it's fifty percent larger than what you already have.
Right, so for, for customers?
I mean, I guess what I'm looking at, right, is you're running your business now, you have a certain number of people watching people.
Hmm. Hmm.
You're adding fifty percent more now of the space, right?
Right.
And obviously you're gonna have to have more people watching, more people, because you're gonna be outside in a planter box area, everything else.
Hmm.
You're just making sure you're looking to add more individuals that have like your experience
Right.
in taking care of that stuff.
Right, definitely. Yeah, we'll definitely have one person stationed out there whenever we're serving customers.
Okay.
And the fifty percent increase is mainly because our kitchen increased, too. So it's a lot of it is the back of house space.
Okay.
The patio space is actually a small portion where one person could easily control that area.
Okay. Okay. Motion to approve, request number two-two dash two-five-zero-six-zero.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve request number two-two dash two-five-zero-six-zero. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote aye. Motion is carried. Request is approved. Thank you, Mr. Ho.
Thank you, guys. Merry Christmas.
Good luck. Same to you.
Thank you, you, too.
Calling agenda item number six, request number two-three dash zero-zero-nine-seven-zero from Shorefire Two Inc. DBA Shorefire. Hi there.
Albert Rulsher, representing Shorefire.
Little Shire, you said?
Yes.
Okay, and this is a request to temporarily increase your license premises. This is for New Year's Eve, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Why don't you walk us through your floor plan, because it's a little bit of a tricky space.
Yes, so are you familiar with the Grand Lanai International Marketplace?
I am.
So it's the entire third floor. It's an event we've been trying to pull off since it opened.
Mm-hmm.
This year, we finally made it happen with the majority of the restaurants participating or supporting. So if you follow the red line, it's essentially controlling where alcohol is going to be during the event. Due to time constraints, this year, we did use Shorefire's liquor license who I'm representing.
Mm-hmm.
There'll be four satellite bars in the common space as indicated by the blue rectangles.
Mm-hmm.
And the yellow oval represents the main stage where Henry Capono will be playing with full band. Tavana will be opening, so it's live entertainment. It's an open-air New Year's Eve event to activate the Grand Lanai in a way where people can actually walk around the space and enjoy it while listening to music. We are going to be having a pineapple drop at midnight, so we're constructing a five-foot-by-ten-foot light-up pineapple, which will be dropped from the sixth-floor parking garage down to the Grand Lanai at midnight.
Slowly, I hope.
Slowly, yes. We're gonna do a couple of test runs. It's still getting built. And it's just an event that, like I said, we've been trying to do because it's such a nice space. It's such easily contained as far as the alcohol goes, so.
Well, I was gonna ask about that. What is your plan for controlling and containing the space?
Right, so if you look, we have steel barricades as well as stanchions throughout. The escalators will be turned off for the event and the elevators will be turned off. The elevators will be controlled by the eighteen KT Protection Service Agents that we've hired, as well as sixteen Allied Universal Agents that we've hired. And as far as traffic coming into the event, the general admission purchasers will stage on the second floor of the mall and come up the second-floor elevator, and we will have similar to an airport truncated lines to go up. Then they'll go up the escalator where they will enter the main event. VIP attendees will be allowed to come off the third-floor elevator. And so the only way to get into the event will be from the parking garage side for general admission from the second floor going up, where all IDs and tickets will be scanned. And the VIP entrance will be on the third floor, where it's also a very narrow path to enter. This is a twenty-one-and-up event. There will not be any underage people allowed on the third floor that night.
Okay, so it's basically one big beer garden then, right?
Essentially, it's a concert. You know, this is the first one we've, we've done,
Mm-hmm.
but the space is conducive to small concerts and things like that. We thought New Year's Eve was the perfect time to do it. We've got Henry Capono who's available. And, you know, we're, we're, we did a study with engineers. We can actually sell up to five thousand. The capacity is five thousand safely as far as weight goes. This year, we decided to not do that for us, and we're expecting to sell about twenty-two-hundred tickets, but we can, we're ready to sell up to three thousand if we could.
Okay, so maximum capacity you folks have here at three thousand?
For this event, yes.
Have you sold ticket? How much, what's your ticket count right now?
We are out of the early bird sales. I believe we are in like the almost two hundred, but no one really purchases tickets till after Christmas.
Right, right.
We're at a hundred and twenty-five dollars is the ticket price at this time.
Okay.
I believe it goes up to one-fifty at two hundred.
Okay. All right. And so you folks will be able to do that online and cap the number at three thousand?
Yes, it's all automatic.
Okay, okay, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any additional questions or type of action?
So with the space itself, right, I mean, you're gonna have enough people out there watching. I see quite a few spaces and quite a few dots and things like that. I mean, I guess I see your floor plan, so I'm just making sure, right, your stanchions, all those things. If it's not a barricade and it's just a stanchion road, make sure we have somebody in those areas, because you do have other businesses, right, that are gonna be out there in the same floor area, but yet not really, right?
Right. We did meet with the police several times to get their opinion. We just followed all their guidance. So we do have the steel barricades where they're recommended. We have the steel barricades and the stanchions everywhere else.
Okay. My motion will be to approve request number two-three dash zero-zero-nine-seven-zero.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve request number two-three dash zero-zero-nine-seven-zero. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote aye. Motion is carried. Request is approved. Thanks, and happy New Year. Happy holidays.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Calling agenda item number seven, request number two-three dash zero-zero-nine-eight-nine from KSLRLM LLC DBA Voyager Forty-seven. Mr. Uyoka.
Good afternoon, Chair, Members of the Commission. Ms. Hry, Robert Uyoka, on behalf of Voyager Forty-seven, Deputy Hulugur Waikiki. Present to my right, Ms. Barbara Campbell. She is the Vice President of Hulugur Hotels and Resorts. At this time, no changes to the Mesquita's report. This involves a temporary reduction to allow Hula Grill and operate in our space from January first to December thirty-first.
Motion to be approved, request number two-three dash zero-zero-nine-eight-nine.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve request number two-three dash zero-zero-nine-eight-nine. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote aye. Motion is carried. Request is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number eight, request number two-three dash zero-zero-nine-nine-zero from Hula Grill Waikiki LLC DBA Hula Grill Waikiki. Mr. Uyoka again, please.
Robert Uyoka, on behalf of Hula Grill Waikiki. Present behind me is Lisa Tangalyn. She is the Assistant General Manager. First name L.I.S.A., last name T.A.N.G.A.L.I.N. No changes in Mesquita's report. This involves the, a temporary increase for, to operate in Voyager Forty-seven.
Motion to approve, request number two-three dash zero-zero-nine-nine-zero.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve request number two-three dash zero-zero-nine-nine-zero. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote aye. Motion is carried. Request is approved.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number nine, request number two-three dash zero-one-two-three-four from Marriott Waikiki Services Inc. DBA Waikiki Beach Marriott Resort. Mr. Uyoka.
Good afternoon, Chair, Members of the Commission. Robert Uyoka, on behalf of Waikiki Beach Marriott. Present to my right, Mr. Jeff Marcello. He's a Director of Food and Beverage. First name J.E.F.F., last name M.A.R.C.E.L.L.O. This involves a conversion, a change from the licensee from a corporation to a limited liability company. Essentially, the name will change. We'll take off the Inc., put in the LLC. The federal ID number remain the same. Ownership will remain the same. Officers will remain the same. Effective date is December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you.
And we did receive your letter of December twenty-one, which is part of the record?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion to approve request two-three dash zero-one-two-three-four.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve request number two-three dash zero-one-two-three-four. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote aye. Motion is carried. Request is approved. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving on to other business, calling agenda item number ten, request number two-three dash zero-one-two-two-four from Keith Kiuchi Esquire. Mr. Kiuchi.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Commission. This is a waiver request for the Boat Keeper Terrace in Homewood Shopping Center. What used to be there was islands, fine burgers. And they're being replaced by a national franchise called Sugar Factory American Brasserie. They obviously aren't here yet. They're in a couple of cities on the west coast, they're in San Diego and in Los Angeles, they're in Las Vegas. Their unique concept is to make the pot culture hops on-site. That's why they call it Sugar Factory. But obviously, they're also serving alcohol.
They're not associated with the sugar, the candy store that opened up by
No.
the third floor over there?
No, this is, this is like a kind of, it's kind of a unique concept because they're making the candy on-site.
Oh, okay.
And, you know, I haven't been in the restaurant industry. I'm kind of trying to conceive how they do that, but they do, and then they call it Tap on American Brasserie at the end, so. It's gonna be an interesting addition, I think, to the shopping center. But this is a waiver request. You still get to review, obviously, the preliminary hearing requests. And, and I think more important, the temporary license application, so.
Commissioners?
Motion to approve request two-three dash zero-one-two-two-four.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve request number two-three dash zero-one-two-two-four. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote aye. Motion is carried. Request is granted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a type of action for agenda items eleven through twenty, please?
Motion for adoption of findings of fact, conclusion of law decision in order for agenda items eleven through thirteen inclusively.
Second.
And then.
Oh, to thirteen?
Yeah, because the next one is different.
Okay, okay, all right.
Sorry.
All right, no worries. Been moved and seconded to approve the adoption of findings of fact decision in order for agenda items eleven through thirteen. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote aye. Motion is carried. The adoption of findings back decision in order is approved.
Then I have a motion for adoption of decision in order for fourteen through twenty inclusive.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the adoption of findings of fact decision in order for agenda items fourteen through twenty inclusive. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote aye. Motion is carried. The adoption of decision in order is approved. Moving into the adjudication hearings. Good afternoon, Mr. Jacob.
Good afternoon, Daniel Jacob, Deputy Corporation Counsel, on behalf of City and County of Honolulu.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number twenty-one, Beer Lab Hawaii.
Madam Chair, I must recuse myself from agenda item number twenty-one due to potential conflict of interest.
Thank you. It's so noted for the record, Commissioner Buckner.
For the Commission's record, I was able to contact the licensee. They've asked for a continuance until January twenty-sixth. I have no objection.
Do we need a motion for that or no?
Nope. Can we just set this one for January twenty-sixth, Ms. Hry?
Yes, we'll just set. Thank you.
Thank you.
We can.
Let's see back in.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That was a hard one.
Calling agenda item number twenty-two, Bowls Burritos LLC.
Again, Commissioner, I did speak to the licensee. They've asked for a continuance until January twenty-sixth. I do not have any objection.
Okay, so we'll also move this item to the January twenty-sixth agenda. How long is that agenda getting? Do we know?
I don't think we filled out the entire agenda, but I think after tonight, we may have.
Okay. Keep track of that.
Yeah, we are.
Okay, calling agenda item number twenty-three, Club Bonita.
I'll represent to the Commission that the licensee's asked for a continuance. I have no objection January twenty-sixth.
Okay, this is also gonna be moved to the January twenty-sixth agenda. Calling agenda item twenty-four, Dicky's Barbecue Pit. Hi, good afternoon.
Hello. Good afternoon.
Please introduce yourself.
My name is Daniel Mobla. It's called the N.I.E.L. Mobla, M.A.B.A.L.O.T.
Thank you.
Mr. Jacobs, could you please read the charge?
On our about August second, twenty-twenty-two, licensee failed to follow, filed with the Commissioner a report showing the true and accurate gross liquor, gross amount of liquor sold by the licensee during the twelve months beginning July first, twenty-twenty-one, and ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two in violation of Rule three dash eighty-one dash seventeen point five-four sub C.
And I believe this was continued from the December eighth meeting, correct? Did we, is this for penalty phase only? Did we, did, um, did we interrupt eight?
December eighth. Um, I think I just came last week, uh, two weeks ago.
Yep, December eighth.
Oh.
My understanding was, was asked for a continuance. I'm not sure if a plea was entered on the record at that time, but I apologize. That was not me.
No problem.
Let's do that again. How would you like to plead on this charge?
Um, I'd like to, um, no contest.
Thank you. Motion to accept the plea.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the no contest plea for agenda item twenty-four. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote aye. The plea is accepted.
And Mr. Jacobs, what was your recommendation?
It's a first-time violation. The recommended fine is two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, and I will report that the licensee has now filled out and turned in their GLAs.
Thank you, dear. Thank you.
Uh, any other comments, other comments, Mr. Jacobs, just needed?
No. No comments.
Okay. Any other comments from the Commission? A motion to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item number twenty-four.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item twenty-four. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote aye. Motion is carried. A letter of reprimand will be issued.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number twenty-five, eleven.
Chair, I need to recuse from this matter due to a potential conflict of interest.
Thank you, Commissioner Mia Share.
So, go ahead. I'm gonna, I am gonna make a disclaimer, because Foodland is listed. I am, so I'm making a disclaimer. ILW does represent the members at Foodland Supermarkets. I am their actual representative. But obviously, it is eleven, which we do not represent. This will not affect my ability to be impartial in deciding on this matter.
Thank you, Commissioner Hollinger. Mr. Uyoka.
Robert Uyoka, on behalf of Foodland eleven, present to my right, Mr. Thau Yasukuchi. He's a Director of Food and Beverage. First name P.A.U.L., last name Y.A.S.U.K.O.C.H.I. This time, like the wavering of the charge, enter a plea of no contest.
Thank you, Mr. Uyoka. Motion to accept the plea.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept a no contest plea for agenda item twenty-five. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote aye. The no contest plea is accepted.
Mr. Jacobs, what is your recommendation?
This violation occurred on August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one, when the licensee failed to timely submit the name of everyone employed. This is a first violation. The recommended fine is two-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Mr. Uyoka.
At, at the time, the employee annual listing was due, it was on, due on August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. We were closed. I'm still close to COVID. We took some time to reopen. Since then, we have timely filed the annual employee listing, and we have assigned multiple people to be in charge of it to make sure it doesn't happen again.
And when was this one filed? Do you, do you know the date?
I'm sorry.
Do you know the date when it was, when it was filed?
I think it was filed just when it was due, so I think it was filed August of twenty-twenty-two. We couldn't find any record that it was filed, you know, immediately, because we're still closed, but.
So you're still closed as of August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Okay. Any other comments from the Commission? A motion to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item number twenty-five.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item twenty-five. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote aye. A letter of reprimand will be issued.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Can we get Commissioner Mia Share that, please? Calling agenda item number twenty-six, Green Apple Lounge.
I'll represent to the Commission. I was not able to get a hold of the licensee in this matter.
Okay, um, do we know if ser, if they've been served?
Yes, service was effectuated on twelve-thirteen-twenty-two. If no one is here, I'd ask that the Commissioner enter default.
Could we make calls for the licensee, just to make sure they're not outside?
Yeah, let's do that. Can we, can we do a call to see if anyone is appearing for agenda item twenty-six, Green Apple Lounge? Seeing as there is no response to our call in the lobby or the, um, uh, gallery, um, I'll enter default.
I will make a motion for entry of default judgment for agenda item number twenty-six.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to enter default judgment in agenda item twenty-six. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote aye. A default judgment is issued.
What is your recommendation, Mr. Jacobs?
This violation occurred on August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one, when the licensee failed to timely submit the name of every person employed. This is a first-time violation. The recommended fine is two-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
A motion to issue a fine of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars for agenda item number twenty-six.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the recommended fine of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars for agenda item twenty-six. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote aye. The fine is approved. Calling agenda item twenty-seven, Kabuki Restaurant and Delicatessen.
When Luke represents the licensee, he's requested a continuance until January twenty-sixth. I have no objection.
Okay, so we'll move this one to the January twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three agenda as well. Calling agenda item twenty-eight, Sang. Calling agenda item twenty-eight, Sangs Kai Loa Thai Res, Thai Cuisine.
Uh, good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Eric DeWongpemy.
Can you spell your name for the record, please?
E R I C, last name DeWongpemy. D O U A N G P H O U M Y.
Okay, thank you.
I'll represent to the Commission that this, uh, was heard last week. The licensee has been alleged to have failed to have submitted the annual employee list by November thirtieth, twenty twenty. Uh, the licensee was asked to come back and report whether they have, uh, indeed filed that annual employee listing. Um, I, I did speak with the licensee very briefly, um, prior to this, and my understanding is that, um, you attempted to file it, but it was told that it was too late and then there was no need. I, I've also been told that the licensee did timely submit their employee statement for fiscal year twenty twenty-one and fiscal year twenty two, twenty twenty-two. Uh, I'll remind the Commission that this is a first offense, uh, the recommended fine is two hundred and fifty dollars.
And, um, were you open for business at that time on November thirtieth, twenty twenty?
Uh, we didn't take out only.
Do folks do take out alcohol?
No.
Just take out food?
Just take out food.
Okay, so nobody was, you weren't actually serving alcohol during this time?
Uh, not at all.
Okay.
And just confirming, you, you attempted to file this, but someone in, uh, the liquor, uh, Commission said not to file it.
Oh, I, I came in a day or two ago, just to make sure I give.
No, he came in way after the fact, and he s, they said it was too late to file, yeah.
Right, right, right. But we asked him to see if it was filed, so, yeah. Okay. Um, any other comments from the Commission? Uh, motion to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item number twenty-eight.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item twenty-eight. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote aye. A letter of reprimand will be issued. Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item twenty-nine, Sakura Japanese Restaurant Four. Mister Kiuchi.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Keith Kiuchi. For the licensee, we waive reading of the charge and our plea of no contest.
Thank you, Mister Kiuchi. Motion to accept plea.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, uh, to accept the no contest plea for agenda item twenty-nine. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote aye. The plea is accepted.
Mister Jacobs, what is your recommendation?
This violation occurred on November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, when the licensee failed to timely submit the name of every person then employed. It's a first time offense. The recommended fine is two hundred and fifty dollars.
This was an oversight on my client's part. I spoke to him, uh, on Tuesday, and he has, this is the Kamakana Kalii, right, restaurant. Uh, he has one in Millawani, oh, as well, so it's an oversight on his part, uh, but eventually did get filed.
And they were open at this time, I presume, twenty twenty-one?
They were open in, at that time.
Any other comments from the Commission? Uh, motion to accept the recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars for agenda item number twenty-nine.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars for agenda item twenty-nine. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote aye. The fine is approved. Thank you. And calling agenda item thirty, Soul Tofu House.
Again, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Keith Kiuchi. For the licensee, we waive reading of the charge and our plea of no contest.
Thank you, Mister Kiuchi. Motion to accept plea.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the no contest plea for agenda item thirty. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote aye. Uh, the plea is accepted.
Mister Jacobs, what is your recommendation?
This violation occurred on November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, when the licensee failed to timely submit the name of every person then employed on the premise. This is a first time violation. The recommended fine is two hundred and fifty dollars.
Mister Kiuchi.
Uh, this is a licensee that's been going through a great deal of stress since COVID because they've, um, fallen way behind with the landlord. That's not an excuse. Mister Kang was here, and I told him I would take care of this, but, um, it was an oversight on his part, but I know what he's been going through. The amount he owed the landlord is in the six figures, and he's had to try to go work that out. So, he was open at the time, but he was closed, um, for most of twenty twenty, so.
Commission, any comments, questions? Uh, motion to accept the recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars for agenda item number thirty.
I don't hear a second on the floor.
You can make a motion if you want. My motion would be to, um, issue a letter of reprimand for this.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item thirty. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote aye. A letter of reprimand will be issued.
Thank you, Commission, and happy holidays.
Thank you, Mister Kiuchi, and same to you. We're calling agenda item thirty-one, Skybox Tap House.
Mister Jen, Alfred Wilser, A O F R E D, W I L T, S H I R E.
I was wondering why you stayed in the gallery.
Same as first.
Ah, yeah, well, I thought maybe you just liked, you know, this was entertaining for you.
We're, we're an entertainer. Mister Jacobs, could you read the charge?
Honored about November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, licensee failed to timely submit the name of every person then employed on the licensed premise who is registered with the Commission or is subject to registration on the date and in such manner as directed by the Commission in violation of rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point eight of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
No chances, please?
No contest.
Uh, motion to accept plea.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the no contest plea for agenda item thirty-one. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote aye. The plea is accepted.
Mister Jacobs, what is your recommendation?
It's a first time, uh, violation. The recommended fine is two hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, I did speak to my office administrator about this, uh, when we got the letter for the first she had heard of it. She is our office administrator for all three of our restaurants. She's never missed a filing before. I'm thinking it's because Skybox was brand new. We opened in September of two thousand twenty-one. Um, she said she's sorry, and she did file this year's on time, so, that's what happened.
So you were only open for a few months?
We opened September ninth of two thousand twenty-one.
Yeah, so then a couple months later this is due.
And I guess she's just, yeah.
Got it. Any other comments from the Commission? Um, motion to issue letter of reprimand for agenda item number thirty-one.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item thirty-one. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote aye. A letter of reprimand will be issued. Calling agenda item thirty-two, Skybox Tap House. Mister Wilshire, again, please.
Uh, yes, Alfred Wilser, standing in Skybox.
Mister Jacobs, could you read the charge?
Honored about June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, on the City and County of Honolulu, State of Hawaii, licensee permitted entertainment which caused complaints from the public or reports from the Commission's investigators indicating that sounds emanating from the licensed premise caused undue disturbance which disrupted the peace and quiet of the neighborhood in violation of rule three dash eighty-four dash seventy-eight point oh three sub B of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Now, would you like to plead for this charge?
No contest.
Motion to accept plea.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the no contest plea for agenda item thirty-two. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote aye. The no contest plea is accepted.
Mister Jacobs, what is your recommendation?
It's a first time violation. The recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
I have, I have a question, sorry, I have a question for, um, Mister Jacob. Do we have any information on whether the investigators were able to verify the nature and extent of any noise?
Sure, um, the, the investigators did visit the facility, and there was a complaintant to it that reported the excessive noise. Um, when the investigators arrived, um, they at first did not hear any music, but then when they went to the elevator, the hotel room, or, I'm sorry, the room of the individual who was complaining, they entered that individual's lanai, and they could hear music, people singing, cheering, yelling. Uh, the noise became disturbingly loud once the sliding door of the individual complaint was opened. There was, I'm sorry, the same was hearing music and noise which was coming from Skybox Tap House.
And do you have any information on the proximity of that hotel room to the licensee or license premises?
The hotel room that was visited was on the fifth room of the Outrigger Hotel.
That narrows it down. Thank you.
Did you have a time?
Yes, um, the licen, or the investigators arrived at twenty-three forty-one hours on June twenty-fourth. They initially parked approximately ninety feet away to investigate the, the complaint. As soon as they parked, they could hear loud music, and then they proceeded to go to the hotel room where they also heard it.
Any, any comments?
Yes, I was actually, uh, there several times that week. We had, that was Rim Pak, uh, and we had just started our karaoke nights and got flooded by the, uh, sailors in. Um, the individual who made the complaint called the cops on us every single night, um, and no matter how much we learned, he would just keep calling them. So what we ended up doing, and what we still do now, is we close the windows, uh, facing the street, and the karaoke singer is already singing towards, uh, the banian tree. She's not, the speakers are not pointed out towards Kalakaua. Um, and since then, we have had no noise complaints, um, but that one individual did, was very disturbed by us, yes.
And I'll note that night, June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two is on, um, oh, I thought it was more.
I have it as a Friday.
A Friday. Yep, me too.
So that individual called how many times? How many days?
He was actually part of Rim Pak, I think. He was a high-ranking officer that night asleep. Um, but we do have large hydraulic windows that, just to make sure we're good neighbors, we shut now when the karaoke starts. We also got a new speaker system that's not nearly as loud.
Any other comments or questions? Why is everyone thinking of me like that?
So, jurors. One option is, Commissioner Buckley, you could approve the recommended fine and defer it for one year, so long as the violation doesn't occur again?
Yeah, that's what. That's actually where I was headed, because you said that you've made improvements since that time, so, um, that was actually one of my explanations. Thank you, Commissioner. Um, so I will, uh, make a motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item number thirty-two, um, but delay collection of, uh, that payment for one year. Do you want to add as long as there's no other?
Let me, yeah, let me re, let me do the motion. Sorry. So, the, the, the motion the Commission is gonna act on is, we're gonna approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars, but defer payment on that is for one year, as long as a similar violation does not occur. Should a similar violation occur, the licensee will be responsible for this five hundred dollars along with any other additional fine that we may impose. Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars. However, will suspend collection for a period of one year, provided no similar violations occur within that one-year period.
Okay, sure.
Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote aye. Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, happy holidays.
Same to you.
Well, best to you on yours.
Not me.
Calling agenda item thirty-three, The Roll Bar Bite Tomoros. Mister Zibakalam.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Commission, Emmanuel Zibakalam, here on behalf of The Roll Bar Bite Tomoros. I believe that we've had a conversation with Council, and, uh, we've agreed that due to a disagreement and stipulation of facts, we'd like to continue this to a later date.
Yeah, I'll represent to the Commission that we, um, until just recently, truly believed we'd be able to stipulate to the facts. Um, unfortunately, that was, broke down in the last minute, not because of any, um, unprofessionalism, of course, but we did decide this probably will be needed to be treated as a full evidentiary hearing. And because of our last-minute decision, we, we are asking that this is continued, and we apologize for the convenience and delay in resolving this matter.
I don't think you need to apologize. I do encourage you folks to work out stipulated facts. It makes our job easier, so thank you for that.
And we'll continue to work on that, and we ask that this be set January twenty-sixth.
Alright, so we'll move this to the January twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners, happy holidays.
Thank you. Calling agenda item thirty-four, Liquor Administrator. Any administrative matters to work in the weekly report, Miss Hurai?
Uh, no additional matters.
Thank you.
Before you gavel out, can I make a comment?
Of course, you can do that.
I, I think this is officially my last official meeting on this commission. I term out at the end of the year. I do plan on holding over until such time the mayor appoints another duly appointed and confirmed commissioner, so, thank you all. It's been a pleasure.
I would like to say thank you for your, your, your service to the city and to this commission and to this office, and we very much are going to miss your expertise and your professionalism here at the commission, though.
Thank you.
Right, anybody else?
I echo the same remarks.
Okay, and seeing as there's no other matters, meeting is adjourned.